The requirement provided for in the Open Public Meetings Law is satisfied. Notice was properly given. Set notice of standing to be transferred to the public news and store ledger on Thursday, January 9, 2020, as well as pulled in on the bulletin board in the city's clerk's office. Uh, clerk manager, local call please.
Council members Davis.
Present.
Good.
Present.
McKenna.
Present.
McCracken.
Present.
Mills-Ransome.
Present.
Vice President Armani.
Present.
Council President Hart.
Present.
Do you have all members present in form?
Thank you.
A little less than other financial documents have been sent to the council via email. Just a reminder to my colleagues to submit your nominations for the CEBAC, Citizens of Public Advisory Committee, so we can plan to make appointments by the March 8th. I've gotten the majority of them, but there's just a couple outstanding.
Question, Greg. Do you want the news and health funders, the whole thing?
Yes.
Yes, please.
We need to be able to contact them, roll them into the communication, so that'll all be used for that. Thank you, councilman. All right, public comments will be limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The ordinances appearing under the second reading have been scheduled for the public hearing, the second reading for February 10, 2020, as advertised. Hold on, who did? Really, no one? No one at the public conference? Uh, of course, public conference. All right. So seeing no one, I've made the motion of closing the public conference. Oh, do you have something?
I'll do that later, I'll do it back.
Oh, thank you.
Mary Brolin, 1785 Sleepy Hollow, Landville. Um, on the, on the North Avenue pedestrian mall, um, I spoke about this at the last meeting, and on, on the 23rd of January, I went over there at about 1:00 AM, just to drive around to see what was going on there, and there were, there were probably 50 cars there on North Avenue and on Gadded Place. The little carnet, parking lot place was filled. There's a cab company, there were four or five cabs, and there was a big bus parked in front of the, of the train station, and, um, I mean, it's winter and it wasn't rush hour, but I didn't see one pedestrian, um, but I'm just wondering where all those cars are gonna go. Lot 6, there were not 50 parking spots in Lot 6, and, um, Lot 6 is now in, uh, needs for redevelopment study, so what's gonna happen to all those cars? Where's that big bus? Is that gonna block Lot 11? Is it gonna block Second Street? Is it gonna block Park Avenue? You know, I just, I just hope that everybody is thinking seriously about this, because it just seems silly to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, public comments? Okay, on the ten motions, please, public comment?
Thank you.
All in favor? In opposition, abstentions. Public conference is now closed. Uh, the ordinances appearing under the second reading have been scheduled for a public hearing, the second reading on February 10, 2020, as advertised. Uh, are there any questions from council on these ordinances?
Do I do the long questions for him?
Uh, yeah, we, we can do the long one, Matt, so if there are any questions, we can start with the council member. Can I? We can go through your questions.
My, my comment is related to bond records from the 1270, and, uh, and just repeating my, I believe my comments from the last council meeting related to the fact that it's a significant amount of money to borrow. We've already expended about $350,000 in the viewing funding. We've got about 150-plus thousand that we spent on some things, and I think the fact that, that just today I picked up a copy of the, I don't know if I get it wrong, but scattered city parking lots and adjacent properties, uh, plan for parking, again, makes me feel like, um, that, that we've got the cart before the horse in a big way here. I don't, I think with the fact that there is a high failure rate and the high 80% for pedestrian malls, and the fact that we're still struggling with parking, and how we're gonna manage that, which could affect a lot of businesses and residences downtown, and doing it wrong could affect future development, I, I just feel that that bottom ordinance should not be moving forward and should be reviewed at another time when all, uh, all the other ducks are in a row and then chairing on the top makes more sense. That's it, one hundred.
Thank you. Councilman McCracken, any questions regarding the new AP ordinances?
No.
Counselwoman Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Counsel, Vice President?
No question.
Counselman Good?
No questions, councilman.
And Council, Councilwoman Davis?
No questions.
All right, uh, do we have consensus to add these to the agenda?
Council President, there's no requirement that consensus, because as a matter of law, they are regenerative.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're gonna go to A through D. Are there any questions for resolutions A through D?
No.
Let's start with Councilman. Councilman McCracken?
Nope.
Counselwoman Mills-Ransome?
Yeah.
Vice President Armani?
No.
Counselman Good?
None.
Counselwoman Davis?
No questions.
Do we have consensus to add these to the agenda?
Yes. Interesting.
Okay, uh, would the business administrator please present their items?
The business administrator has one item for consideration by the council. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start on the side of this. Councilwoman Davis?
With the cancellation of the contract with dental, is the plan with, that we're going with with Aetna, is it cheaper, or is it because it's in that group that it makes it a better, um, a better use of our budget of money?
We don't have a separate quote for dental from Aetna. It's, uh, it's now bundled with the medical and the vision under, uh, dent, uh, Aetna, so there isn't a separate item. Uh, we use that to help bring the overall cost of the plan with Aetna down, uh, because it's now bundled.
Thank you.
Counselman Good?
No.
Vice President Armani?
Yeah, could you explain how much you expect us to save by switching over to Aetna over Dr. Dental?
Uh, not specifically for, uh, the dental plan, but Director West will go into that in a little more detail in item G when he talks about the overall Aetna contract.
Excellent, thank you. Counselwoman Mills-Ransome?
Well, I guess without talking about the overall, could Director West, if there is a savings, that's a yes.
We were able to get the overall proposal from Aetna reduced by 2% as a result of including dental. Further went ahead and, uh, the doc, the dental contract will, uh, save us, you know, an additional $100,000 or so, uh, because we're no longer having that expenditure.
Counselwoman McCracken?
No.
Good. And Counselwoman?
I'm okay on this one, I'll have questions on the other.
All right. Thanks. Do we have consensus to add D to the agenda?
Yes. Yes.
All right, well, corporation, Council President Hart?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, the office corporation council has one item, item F. Happy to answer any questions, Councilman.
Okay, we'll start with Councilman Good.
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, Councilman McCracken?
Nope.
Counselwoman Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
No.
Counselman Good?
No questions.
Counselwoman Davis?
No questions.
Okay. We have consensus to add this to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Would the Department of Finance?
Meeting council, Department of Finance has one item, item G, uh, you know, being presented to you this evening. Any questions? So I'm here to answer.
Okay, let's start with that. Counselwoman Davis?
Yes, in the agreement, um, it says that the city is responsible for establishing reserves in the amount of $965,000 should the city terminate the agreement with Aetna. Can you just explain that a little bit more and why we would need that?
The basis of the $965,000 is to cover Aetna should we cancel a contract and we have incurred but not reported claims, you know, in the pipeline, and so they require that as a part of, uh, the agreement, and the reason is in this resolution is that it is something that we have to recognize. We do not have the budget for it.
Thank you.
Counselman Good?
Director West, can you say that last part again? We do not have the...
You'll notice that the $965,000 is not included as a budgetary number. You know, the, our plan is all over the course of, of time to build a reserve.
Okay.
You know, should we get to the point where we want to terminate, you know, is it over covered?
Thank you.
Vice President Armani?
How does this compare to the, um, state insurance in terms of, um, not only quality but cost?
The state plan, you know, from a benefits perspective had a number of differences that, uh, were not as good as what we have with, uh, with Aetna. There were a number of drugs that were no longer gonna be a part of the formulary. In fact, there were in excess of 40 drugs that were no longer gonna be readily available. I think that I would tell you to also take a look at the Byram Township that was in the papers about a week ago, you know, where there are a number of lawsuits being filed against them because of, uh, the drugs that are no longer being covered. I would also tell you that, uh, in our discussions with the state, uh, they made it very clear that, uh, they had no interest in wanting to use something like the difference card to make all of the benefits and features and functions, uh, better than or equal to what they've had previously, and that made it real difficult. You know, another example would be the out-of-pocket cost that it would be subject to, it was gonna go from 6,000, a little over 6,000 bucks to in excess of 13,000 bucks. You know, so that became an item that, uh, we thought would be very difficult to, to overcome, and so we looked at all of the features and functions and the, and the pricing, and it just made sense for us to look at Aetna once we knew that we didn't have an option to provide the kind of, uh, plan that we thought would be beneficial not just to the city but to all of our retired and active employees.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Mills-Ransome? Counselman McCracken? Counselman McKenna?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, and I was trying to find it, uh, in the prior agendas, the presentation of just previously to go to the state helped better program, I'm saying on, uh, had significant savings in it, especially against the increase that Aetna was gonna have, which, uh, the state was hoping 15% increase?
And what you saw wasn't so much the state, it was the state in combination with the difference card that was going to result in the savings. You know, on both the active and retirees, when we lost the ability or no longer felt comfortable going forward with the difference card, you know, those savings weren't there anymore.
So we've got a bit of a hole as a result. There was a plan to savings that was...
That would be correct.
And, and how did, how did we get so far down the road where we made a public comment about saving money in the dividend? Collected partying issues related to it, contractual or...
There were issues that surfaced downstream related to the employment lines and the respective unions.
So, you know, Director, I certainly appreciate, uh, that we had the city's costs in mind if we tried to transition to the state program and it didn't work, but there still was some opportunity that we're taking advantage of it to save over last year's cost, um, by combining our dental. Is that correct?
I have to word that a little differently. You're going to see that, or I anticipate that the overall health benefits budget will be up somewhere in the area of 650,000 to 70,000 dollars beyond what we paid previously. You know, and, uh, so that's what we're anticipating, you know, as opposed to all of the savings that you've heard about previously.
So, I mean, just, just a clarification here, the 2% was just a savings off of what they quoted because you threw in the dental?
Next to health benefits. See, what I'm talking about, we have other health-related lines that are in there, short-term, long-term disability coverage, so now I'm talking about the overall health benefits budget line when I talk about it being, you know, 650,000 to 70,000 dollars more than it, uh, was last year. So it's, uh, things like, uh, the medical opt-outs, uh, our Part B, Medicare Part B payments, you know, to the retirees, all of those things now humming to the budget too. So it's not just pure medical benefits, it's really looking at the whole budget line knowing its health benefits.
Can you just talk a little bit about the difference card and the, the experience employees have been having with it and the value that it brings?
The, the biggest difference is that the difference card, you know, requires individuals to pay a lot more attention to their healthcare. They have to understand, uh, you know, what their co-pays are. So if you go and get a prescription, you have to pay, uh, you charge $17 to the card, $3 you're responsible for paying. People didn't always remember that. We've had instances where, when people got, you know, received checks for their medical care, you know, people weren't remembering to deposit. They, I guess they weren't getting bills from the doctors, so it had a lot to do with education. So we, we've had, you know, innumerable training sessions, in fact, Aetna and the difference card show up every month to meet with the employees and retirees to go over things. But a lot of it had to do with, with education. What it does for us, it's, it's basically, you know, allows us to, to better manage, uh, or to actively get involved in the management of healthcare. So we, we gotta look at things, we do have the employees trying to get engaged, that's why you see so many wellness initiatives, you know, and, uh, whether it's at employee appreciation day or anything else, there's been a major focus, you know, and or the walk-off challenges around wellness and trying to get the employees to help us help themselves. And so that will continue, and so, uh, you know, we will continue to advocate for wellness and ask the employees to get more actively involved in, in managing the healthcare, and, uh, but you should use the difference card, it's a lot like a debit and or credit card. There's a certain amount that, uh, there. Now, the one biggest difference that we're gonna have going forward is that the difference card will now be in a position to pay any providers directly. So we've taken that responsibility away from the employees. They no longer have to worry so much about, uh, paying those bills, so we'll be able to have their explanation of benefit statements go directly, uh, to the difference card and they will then be paid, uh, directly as opposed to the checks going to the individuals and then the individuals then having to remember that they incurred a service and have a responsibility to pay off those bills.
Counselman?
Yes.
The difference card is similar to a call savings account or what they used to call cafeteria plan kind of concept?
It is not a health savings account, uh, you know, it doesn't have, uh, any relationship to the, the individuals from that perspective. This is really something that allows us to, to manage costs because we may provide a 2020 plan, $20 copay for, you know, a doctor visit, a $20 copay for a specialist visit. The plan that we purchased may be a 50-75 plan. And so we, we manage those expenses then, you know, and so the employees get a list of what, what their benefits are and what they're supposed to do with that difference card. And again, by also adding the fact that the explanation of benefit statements will go directly to, to the difference card, that will take a lot of, you know, the pain, but I think that individuals have gotten reasonably comfortable with it. The monthly meetings that, uh, are held by Aetna and the difference card have dwindled in terms of participation. We used to have lots of people and now we have few of any.
Council President, I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
Um, so, Mr. West, we talked about originally the state health plan, we were gonna have a savings, but that's not gonna happen now because they didn't want the difference card, so now we're gonna have an increase in health benefits costs. So it seems like the difference card might be the problem here. But, so what's our contract with the difference card? And if we didn't have it, how would that change, like, the cost of health insurance? Would it increase it even more to what's gonna happen now?
Try several million dollars more.
Without, without it.
So what's our contract link with the difference card?
So, well, the, the primary reason for the difference card is to allow us to close the gap between, uh, the equal to or better than that's in the contract, the union contracts today. So under those, those contracts, we have to provide benefits that are equal to or better than what was in place, say, on January 1st, 2018. Most of the base plans that are offered by insurers aren't equal to or better than, so we need the difference card to, to close that gap. That's, that's the only, that's the primary reason that we, the city, need the, uh, the difference card. Otherwise, we would not be providing equal to or better than benefits to all of the unions, and we would have a problem.
Okay, so what's our contract with the difference card?
I'm sorry?
Like, how long is our contract with the difference card? When is that up?
Right, right now it's one year.
Okay.
It aligns with the...
So, it sounds like we got the difference card to save us money, but now it sounds like the difference card is now costing us money because we couldn't go to the state health plan, which is cheaper, and our Aetna insurance is going up. Is that correct?
No, even, yeah, even if we went to the state plan, we would be in the same position as using Aetna without the difference card, which is, we're not gonna meet our obligations to the union to provide equal to or better than coverage. So, we need the difference card to close that gap.
Counselman Good?
So to go to the state without it isn't really an option because we would have union, union issues.
Counselwoman Good?
Tell us, just for clarity, because I, I understand the concept, that now with the difference card, that you're basically substituting cash to, to improve the benefit that you can't get. What would the, what's the delta if you don't have the, the difference card and you contract the services that would be required in a, in a union contract? How much more would that cost? If you actually got the Aetna program to, uh, do the equal to or better than?
It would've cost us several million dollars more to move forward with a pure insurance company-only product.
So, so this one is cheaper because it's, it's a use basis on the, on the debit card? That was that gap you were talking about, right?
We have consensus to add this to the agenda? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, would the police department present their items?
Yes, the police department has one item, letter H. Do you have any questions?
Counselman McKenna?
I, I just have one, namely the, the, uh, the document that's attached, kinda outlining what, what they're doing. It, it changed, um, the wording, kept going from accredited to with accredited terminology, because we are accredited now, and it's renewing it, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Preparing us for the next, uh, the next accreditation phase.
Okay, they, they just go back and forth. Thank you.
Counselman McCracken?
No questions.
Counselwoman Mills-Ransome? Vice President Armani?
Can you share, um, the benefits of, um, the accreditation in terms of what the city sees in terms of benefits?
Well, I, I made some notes to that. It's a means to certify that we're meeting the official requirements, it's like best practices of the police department. It also, um, brings great accountability to the department, uh, it's, it's a proven management system, because this is where we do our written directives, our policies and procedures, um, as well as it also provides an objective evidence, um, and commitment of excellence for the police department. So it's basically our standards that we do, and this is what is New Jersey, uh, the New Jersey State, uh, Police Association, they are the ones who certify us as accredited agencies, so it just brings our level and standards up, which also gives better service to the community if we're holding our officers at a higher level.
Excellent. Counselman Good?
I have no question.
Counselwoman Davis?
Director Burgess, can you just explain, um, to the public what that next phase of accreditation looks like?
So, basically, the next phase is, it's what they call the fifth phase, it's when they come every three years and we have to show proof that we're meeting those standards. So for every policy and procedure that we have within the agency, we have to show, show some form of proof that we're doing that, as well as the service that we're, we are seeking, any new attorney general guidelines that come out, they will assist us with developing or updating our policies and procedures to meet those guidelines as well. So that way, when the, the New Jersey Police Association, they actually come and come here and they do checks, like hand checks, to make sure that we are at those standards.
Thank you.
Is it true that accreditation saves us money as well in terms of insurance?
It, what it, it, yes, it can. I mean, I can't give you statistics on that because we've only been since 2018, October, so I wouldn't be able to give you statistics on that, but it can, yes.
Well, Director West is the knownest guy, I'd probably... Is he prepared?
Put it this way, uh, we are respected at the PCC, because we've taken a whole host of actions, accreditation being one of them, to, uh, to be a strong partner, you know, for the PCC, and to minimize the insurance cost that we pay, you know, to be a part of, uh, that operating group.
Council President, by my head, anytime we're sued, our police department is sued for our, maybe in unlawful use of force, there's always two parts to the case. It's a case against the officer, it's a case against the department regarding to its policies, procedures, and customs. Having accreditation makes the defense of those cases so much easier, uh, from, from my perspective, because, uh, we have, all of our policies and procedures are up to date, uh, they are at the height of law enforcement policy, um, and it definitely helps us defend the city and defend the department.
Thank you, council. We have consensus to add this item to the agenda?
Yes.
Would the Department of Public Works present their items?
Council President, Council Department of Public Works has nine items, letters I, V, Q. In summation, are there any questions?
Let's start with Councilman McKenna.
Yes, I have, uh, oh, yeah, oh, so, so now, I look back and we have a resolution in 18 and a resolution in 19 by, I believe, the same street sweeper, the Elgin Street Sweeper, so this is gonna be our third one?
This will be the second one, we have one in 19, this will be the second one that we purchased.
Oh, did we not buy the one in 18?
No.
Oh, okay.
In 19, we bought one in 19, yes.
Okay, because our 272-18 was for a sweeper too. What's the, what's gonna, how will it enhance what the streets were doing last week?
Question, councilman, what it does for us, if we're trying to do citywide street sweeping program, provide that, by addition of the sweeper, right now, we have now fleed 2,007s, so life expectancy with sweeper is like five to seven years. Okay, but we maintain, sweeper's are knocking wood, it's a good job our guys have been doing the same thing, uh, so this would just add to it, so we... So, this would just add to it, so we can have sweep for the north, south, east, and western parts of the city. We do street sweeping, have backup. That's the purpose of that, so we sweep the streets. Lay-spraying, probably somewhere, looking to kick some off like that, or you can just sweep.
So, do you have a, similar to Jersey City where you have a certain day where you can expect a sweep?
Correct, there's six days a week, yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor McCracken?
Hello?
Councilwoman Davis? Vice President Almari? Councilman McKeon?
Yes, Director, I missed it.
Can you tell me how many you have altogether?
Covering, we have three. 2007, one 19.
All operation, before, yes. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yes. Director Daddi, I think the street sweepers are great. I'm glad that we're getting an updated one, but my concern is, and maybe it's for Director Burgess, that we have these street sweepers, but we have an enforcement problem in the downtown area where people are parking during that two-to-seven time, and so, the street sweeper can't even effectively get down the street because it has to weave in and out of cars.
And just may add to that question, what we wanna do with time is put an order out there where we'll have street sweeping hours posted. And that's what we revisit, too, in terms of about the enforcement piece. Right, enforcement helps with everything that we do. Because the concept is sweep the curb, not to go around cars.
Oh, we have, so, we have them in parts of the city where there's no parking from 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. But, so, maybe this is more of a Director Burgess comment. We have it 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., but it's not always enforced. So, if the street sweeper's a little late that day, and it's coming at 6:30 instead of 6:00 o'clock, there are already cars there, and it's not effectively sweeping the street. So, if there's a way that we can have better enforcement, especially during those times, and especially during that 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., is a lot of the times when people are parking there because they know it's not gonna be enforced.
So, that is something that I can look into. I can work with Mr. Daddi to see when they are doing the work, and then also work with enforcement to look in those areas, and we can definitely work on it.
Okay, also, for letter P, I think that's a great resolution because food insecurity is a real problem, not only for the children in the city, but also for seniors. So, it's my hope that in addition to this resolution, the senior center will work to provide meals, not only to homebound seniors, but to its members outside of Monday through Friday. So, if we can look for, I know, for example, for like schools, they have like the backpacks you take home for the weekends. If we could find a way to just really help with food insecurity with our senior population, I think that would be a great thing to complement this resolution. And for resolution Q, can we find out how many of these emergency abatements are just one-time abatements? And how many of these properties that we've had to do multiple abatements on? And what's been our success rate for receiving the money back from the liens we placed on these properties?
That goes back to, of course, down to June, when money does come into the liens, but sometimes you clean a lien, and then, you know, sometimes you don't get paid, but a lot of times you do. Depends on what certain properties. Some of these properties are repeat offenders, that we have to go back and clean. So, they're in system for a year. Remember, once we clean them, once it's not maintained, we'll clean them again and replace another lien on that property. So, up to a year.
So, maybe that's more of a Mr. West's question. How much, like, what's the success rate for getting the money back?
Council, can you just define what success means to you?
Like, so, like, how many?
From our perspective, it may be, success may be the fact that the property continues to be cleaned up. Are you defining success as our ability to recoup the money?
Yes.
And the property's actually being cleaned?
Um, so, I think in this particular instance, I'm talking about the success of recouping the money. So, I had two questions. So, one was about the success of recouping the money, and then the second was, how many of these properties have we done multiple abatements on? So, you just said that we do an abatement, and then it has a year, and then we'll put another lien on it. So, what happens after that year?
And we go back to the system, the process starts over again. We want you to have the property. But sometimes properties, there's no property up to that point, but a property may be sold or bought by someone else, that's what happens.
Okay.
Just to follow up with Councilwoman Davis's question, and just provide a comment. These liens, once they're placed, they don't go away.
Oh, they don't.
So, eventually, we do get paid once the property is transferred or they sell the home.
Correct. They close anything, right, there's a search done.
So, I guess you could just speak to, is there any circumstances where we may negotiate the lien and not, and take less than what we're owed?
Well, we, Council says, no. We haven't said at all.
Absolutely, when the property, when there's a closing on the property, we demand a lien form, we do not negotiate this.
So, Councilwoman Davis, we may not get paid right or whatever, eventually.
Thank you.
We could probably, our entire question.
It's more, how long does it take for us to do it?
Right.
But, can I ask you, Councilman? A home cannot be transferred to someone else in an actual sale until that lien is satisfied, regardless of how many liens.
Correct. All property back, also, the domain search, top search, everything has been paid.
Thank you.
But I would submit that the recouping of the money is a secondary issue. The most important thing is that the property's cleaned up. I think that, you know, Mr. Daddi would, you know, would love to have more people to go out and do these cleanups, but we only have a limited group, and they do as much as they can. But the, we're not, again, this is a money-making venture.
Right.
As his respect, this is about doing, cleaning properties that are dire need of help.
Right, I agree.
Same as the street sweeping, right? We want to just clean the streets, the bowls, clean the curb, right?
So, just a couple comments. So, regarding J, K, and L, I think it's notable that we came in under contract for those items, so we're actually getting one back. So, give props to the director for managing those properties efficiently. That's a good thing. And also, you know, regarding the street sweepers, we certainly wanna beautify our city as we experience growth and development of our city. We have community organizations, you know, the City of Pride, you know, the New Town, you've put together, cleaning out, cleaning the block. There was one this weekend on Sixth Street with Lenny. So, we have the community doing their part. The city also, you know, the city's our part, and I think getting another street sweeper along those lines. So, do we have consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
All right, will the Department of Economic Development present their?
I have one item for Council tonight. Are there any questions?
Councilwoman?
Yes. Um, so, I saw in the redevelopment agreement that there was money for community benefits. Where exactly does that money go, like, in the budget? Does it go back to the general fund? Or there are lines for community benefits?
Turn that over to you.
Where it goes back?
Depends on how it's designated in the agreement. What we tend to do is establish a trust account, you know, purely for that particular venture. You know, but some of them could be going to, like, your promise. You know, it really depends on what's negotiated. And we will set up a separate account so that, you know, we can stand behind that and know where every dollar that they give toward a community benefit, you know, is and how it gets spent.
Also, under the same community benefit, it says that it goes for like a later project. Does the administration have any specific plans, like currently, or where that money would go?
We have different projects that we fund through the community benefits agreement. What I would like to set up, and the mayor has agreed to it, is a redevelopment trust, which is specific to redevelopment. And some of the costs that we would like to be able to fund is some equipment, for example, for the fire department for some of these new developments. And so, we can fund equipment, we fund streetscapes, we fund equipment, streetscapes, parks improvements, all kinds, education. So, there are all kinds of things that the community benefits agreement can fund. And so, in some cases, we negotiate streetscapes. So, for example, with the Wawa, there will be a streetscape from Terrell Road to Leland on both sides of the street, meeting our streetscape requirements. With the Quinn, in addition to money to the schools for tablets for the next 30 years, there is going to be an improvement to a park that's kind of in the center of the Quinn development. We're currently negotiating, doing some improvements to the skate park and to other parks. So, generally, we've been looking at streetscape projects, parks, and parks and education. I would like to include more things for fire and police as part of that, as we begin to look at it. We've also talked about paying off some of the debt associated with the North Avenue streetscape project. So, as we begin to negotiate community benefits for projects downtown, we'll see more of that added to the community benefits.
Also, there is a section for off-site improvements?
Right.
Can you just kind of explain what that means?
Generally, that is near and around the project. And so, if there is a park close by, if there's streetscapes that need to be done, those are the kinds of things that we'd like to do with that money. So, part of off-site improvements is specifically in the area around the development that's taking place.
Also, how do we come up with the numbers for the community benefits and off-site improvements? Is that a number that is set by the redevelopment? Or is that something that we negotiate back and forth? And how, like, what's the rationale behind, like, the $100,000 and the $25,000?
Yeah, we negotiate that with the developer. We look at size of the project. We also look at the financials associated with the project. So, different projects, until a $5 million project, we probably would only ask for $25,000. But for a project that's $20 million or more, we go up into $100,000, in some cases, we go on to $250,000. And so, it goes higher depending on, really, the size of the project in terms of the give-back.
What's the highest community benefit, like, we've asked for from the developer?
Uh, God, the one that I know that's probably, well, the highest probably was the Bülmenberg project. And that was somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 for the community benefits agreement, the streetscapes, the off-site improvements. I don't have that number, but I can certainly provide it.
Do we know what the, what the money went to for the Bülmenberg project?
Uh, that was negotiated before I got here. But my predecessor, Carlos, negotiated that particular deal. And so, Ron, do you have something to add?
It's in the bank.
It's in the bank right now, so we'll, okay. We'll be assigning it from the bank. Okay.
Council President?
No questions.
Council President Almari? No questions. Councilwoman Mills-Rancey? Councilman McCracken?
Good.
And Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. It, I, the donations to off-track improvements and programs like that would be fantastic. I think one thing that might maybe be good for the public and for council, council members today, council members 10 years from now, to maybe help get their arms around it and maybe organize it for everybody over time is to develop, you know, part of it's gonna be in our capital improvement plan, which is, what, a seven-year, seven-year program, correct?
Five-year program.
And then, some of these things are other improvements that are really, really needed, that we probably need to be put into some sort of a spreadsheet and identified so that we can start taking them off. And I think one of them, I should say checking them off. I think, for example, we are really, really, really behind in striping roads. For example, we have long expanses of roads. It was noticed that today, Central is just extraordinarily wide, and there's not a stripe to be found. However, striping is expensive. Stripping intersections is expensive for crosswalks. And a lot of these developers are coming into areas. This one, for example, great opportunity to get them to pay for striping Leland in South, Leland in North, any of those types of areas so that we can kind of start putting the finishing touches on some of these areas that need. And quite honestly, it's expensive to do some of this stuff. Even, I don't know, do we outsourced this, or we do our own, or?
No, it's outsourced.
We certainly can make the off-site improvements go to the striping of roads. In the case of, actually, we actually need the utility to come back on South Avenue because we had done, we had, we did Leland to Terrell Road prior to New Jersey American Water. So, the utility has the responsibility to come back and do that.
Do we have consensus to add this item to the agenda?
Yes.
All right, will the Department of Health and Social Services present their items?
Good evening, Council President, Council. The Department of Health and Social Services presents four items. Are there any questions?
Council, Councilwoman Davis? Start with Almari?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim? Councilwoman McCracken? Councilwoman Mills-Rancey? Vice President Almari?
Mm-hmm.
Councilman McKeon?
Director, how much of these funds are allocated, let's just say, to the average family if it's needed? I understand that it's to the service, basically to the homeless. So, when you break that down, how much are we talking per family? Or how much is allotted to that, those individuals?
Thank you for the question. It really depends on what the maximum is for the grant. So, for one of the grants, the maximum that you can contribute is $500 per family. But for another one, it's $1,100. So, it depends on what is dictated by the law.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Director Brown?
Yes.
So, we have two different grants that are similar, I guess, in scope. Can you just kind of explain the difference? Like, how they would benefit the public differently if they are? Are they gonna, like, can one family get both grants?
So, effectively, all the grants are very similar. They are to help prevent homelessness, whether it's through rental assistance, utility assistance, or down payment assistance. What I mean, down payment, to help someone acquire an apartment who has been homeless or been homeless. Basically, it's really how we get the grant and the funding institution provides the money. That really is the difference.
Also, how are we getting the word out about these services to the populations that may be at risk for homelessness?
So, we have a couple ways. One, of course, we use social media, but we also work with the social, our social work providers. We have a committee to meet with everyone, and we let them know what our funding. But to be quite frank with you, we often have a way to us. And so, people do know that these funds are out there. People are in need for these funds, and unfortunately, we can't always satisfy every individual household, but we try our best. If we can't do what we do, we partner with other social service agencies. So, we couple our money with Salvation Army, and that makes our dollars go further. And it allows for us to service a lot more people than if we just wanted to have it alone.
They have a way of finding you, too.
Absolutely.
As a follow-up, so, these two grants look like they work to prevent homelessness before residents get to that phase, which is great, but also, are we addressing the problem of people who are already homeless?
As in, when you say, as in find a house, do I eat it, or?
So, like, these grants, and the way I'm reading it, is that if you're close to homelessness, you can go and, well, help you out. But if you're already homeless, like, how are we assisting those people who don't even know, like, they're not even close to finding an apartment or anything like that?
So, all the grants offer homelessness or being homelessness. Some of them, one in particular, all of them actually, produce some form of case management. So, if you are in need of referrals, if you are in need of assistance in social services, often when you're homeless, it's not simply that you don't have homelessness. It could be that you need medical care, may need a tree pad, an addiction of some form. And so, while these grants don't necessarily address all of the homeless situation, what it does address is case management. So, when these individuals come in, we can provide those services and refer them to a place that will take them further. And indeed, some of those individuals have come back to us where we can then assist them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have consensus to add this agenda?
Yes.
All right, will the Department of Communications and Technology?
The Department of Communications and Technology has two items for consideration. Are there any questions? Because Jazz isn't here today, either myself,
Because Jazz isn't here today, either myself, Director West, or Aliqua will answer any questions that.
So are they going to, Counselwoman Davis?
Yes, so I've got multiple questions here. One, I'm looking at the resolution for the first one, the $28,500 number or letter W. Do either one of these have, it doesn't look like the W is done, but any of these are grant-funded? The W has an account line and said it's certified by the CFO, so I'm assuming that's our money that's on.
Thank you. To answer that question, no, none of these are grant-funded. All of these are coming out of our OE.
Thank you. The, the other question I have with this, well, first of all, W is in agreement with the individual, but it invoices a company, so I don't know if that, we should change the, we should contract it as company or not.
Unfortunately, that was just, didn't get updated in the system. He did invoice us or quote us as himself. So we do have a quote as the person, as the individual in the system. It's the same price, he just removed the tech name, Tech 44, and it just says his name, Neil Amen.
So he's moonlighting?
More as if, you know, for us, we can't work with anyone who does not have a BRC in the tech name. His BRC is underneath his name, so we are just dealing with him as a consultant versus dealing with him as his company.
Okay, and, and what's the reasoning for doing two? First of all, I'm really struggling with the use of taxpayer funds for this versus scholarships at the schools and things like that. That's a different conversation, but why, why are we doing two different agreements for basically the same thing, different cost, but?
Basically, we're just redoing the same thing we did last year. So Union County College will be handling the night school, which takes that off of us. Now we don't have to make sure that we have a building open late. We don't have to deal with staffing and stuff like that. They're taking on that onus. We will be dealing with Neil Amen, who will be doing the morning at our case center. So we will have complete control over that morning class. But before, last year, we ended up doing three classes. We had two night classes and one morning class. So we just basically dropped one class.
Okay, and, and what is the, so this is a total of up to 25 individuals?
Um, 20, 10 and 10. We will only have 10-day students and 10-eight students.
Oh, well, the agreement X is 10 to 15.
At the time of when we were doing the, if you're looking at the proposal for Union County College, their minimum is 10, they can go up to 15. We're only paying them for 10. So that's why the resolution, I believe, for Union County is about $32,000. That's only for 10 students.
I believe the agreement says up to 15, but it would be cheaper if it's just 10.
But it's just 10, yes. We're not doing 15.
You're not doing 15, because I thought the 3,275 is a per student. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
I get you, okay. And then my other question is, what's, I have two more, what's the age range of participants?
So we're doing adults, so we said 18 was our requirement. We ought to be a Plainfield resident, 18 years old with a high school diploma.
And what, what, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I first said, uh, forgive me. What, what do they want to, it's not a dream, for attendees?
That, I do not know what are the ages of our attendees. I don't think I've ever really asked that question. But we do generally have a nice flow of students. So I have, I've known some, some people I know I went to high school with. I know it can range anywhere between, you know, 35 and older. I have not actually seen too many of the younger residents. But when we did our information session this year, there were a lot more, I would say, straight-out-of-high-schoolers that are interested this year.
Okay, and, and how many of these participants in the past have gotten employment with this?
Or with us?
With the, no, with the certification.
Okay, well, unfortunately, right now with the program, we only have one person that got the half certification. Cisco did a, they broke their certification class into two. You can get the CCENT or get the CCNA. So so far, only one student successfully got the CCENT. He's looking to get his CCNA, and after that, he's going to go ahead and get another job, but he already works in the tech field.
Okay, so he's awesome, but what? I mean, we, we.
A lot of abbreviations.
We, no, 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 I, no, I read the thing, so I get, I get a few abbreviations. We have one person that's been certified so far? We're, we're out, we're talking, this is troubling, we're talking $137,000 in the last two years.
Well, the program has only been, Ramin running it, it's only been one year for the Cisco. We were doing also like digital literacy, and we had a bunch of other classes that we were running. Currently, last year, yes, we only have one student who's certified. There are other students who are attempting to get the certification. But the class isn't easy, the certification exam is not easy, and it's expensive to also take the exam. And we're only reimbursing the students who successfully pass. So we have had several students who have attempted and have failed at passing the certification. But it's something that they have to work at, if it's something that they truly want to do, and we're giving them that opportunity to learn.
So I, I think this, I think that the concept is great. I'm still struggling with using taxpayer money directly for this as opposed to using it in some sort of a block, like if it goes to UCC or something like that. However, I'm really troubled now because we've got pretty significant investments in these programs. We have the NAM, Plainfield NAM technology, which is, I, I don't know what happened to that, quite honestly. But there's, there's a lot of investment here in tax dollars, and we don't have, we don't have very good results. And no fault of, I'm not going to say it's faulted. It could be some of the instructors, quite honestly. If, if they're struggling, maybe they shouldn't be in the program because they're not prepared for it or they, it's not money well-spent because the instructors aren't as good. But I think if we are going to continue to commit taxpayer money, we need to start recording, we need to really track this stuff and figure out how old the people are, what their background is for, for having the skill set to do it. I mean, I, I wouldn't be able to do this. So it's, it's obviously, it's very different than using skill set. But we, at the end of this, need to be able to, as, as a council and as an administration, look at this stuff and say, you know, this is, this is working. It's as great an idea as it is, we don't need to spend, I mean, we have $60,000, $60,000. You know, it's pretty significant money over the last couple of years to, to have one person. And, and I think that we need to, right now, decide, or I don't know how this works, you know, general fixing, if, if the metrics that will be collected and tracked, you know, are, can be created before we vote on it or we table this and, and have the time out next month with it. But, but I, I can't justify moving this along, and, and there's no benefit to the community, quite honestly, because the person isn't getting a job and then paying taxes and then participating. You know, this, this is money that's not, you know, somebody's certification.
Well, we've made several changes to the program this year, and I think that will actually kind of alleviate some of that problem. I do agree, some people registered, we had a lot of things that were going on. We had students who were registering and did not understand the demand that this class is. This is very much like a college online course, and I guess they were under the assumption, if I show up to class, that's all I need to do. So we have definitely been changing how we're running this program this year. We're doing more information sessions with the college and making sure that the students understand at each and every session what we require from them. One is that we require them to at least do 24 to 42 hours a week self-studying. We are also letting them know that we cannot replace them. If they are serious about taking this class, they have to be 120% committed to attending every session because we cannot replace that seat with another individual. So we are making sure that we are hammering into them, and we made it that the information sessions are a requirement. Before, it was more like, you know, if you show up, you show up. But this time, it's you have to show up to an information session, you have to register with us through Union County College, and we're going to give some time for you guys to really think about this commitment. And once you are guaranteed that you are going to be here and be active, and we will give them all the tools to do that, we will also give them tutoring as well, which is a part of the Neil Amen. He will be tutoring, whether it's the daytime or nighttime students, so that we will have more people certified, and we explain to them that the more that they certify and get to at least that CCNA, we can do, possibly do other courses. Because the CCNA is actually just like your associate's degrees. There are more degrees that they have to build on top of that, that they have to at least get to the CCNA. So this, we're dedicated.
Sorry, based on my discussion with the director, because of the low completion rate, there's a significant focus being placed on the screening, the upfront screening as candidates.
Well, and, and I think that's great, and I'm sorry that it, it didn't work out the last time because that was a lot of taxpayer money that was not used, you know, well. But I, I think there need to be some metrics designed around this, you know, if it's going to go forward. So that the next time there's a report for the council that says this is how, this is the return on this, on this investment. I mean, really, it's, it is an investment in, in the future of these individuals. And, and if only one of them was already in IT, is the only one that benefited, you know, I don't, I don't know why we're in this business.
I, I have to say something. I think it's, it's, the council needs to know as well as the, the public that this was a multi-pronged initiative. It involved the library, the high school, as well as what the city was doing. Most of you may have read that the high school has now started its Cisco program. So it's been returned, over 10 years ago, the high school had a program. You know, it's been reenacted. At the library.
For, for high school students.
For high school students. There's also a new announcement, a STEM program at the lower schools. In addition to that, at the library, you talk metrics. We've had 17 people get certificates in Microsoft Office Specialist certifications, and 174 have gone and gotten basic technology courses. And that, that's in 2019. And so far this year, we've got two people who go through Microsoft certifications as well as nine of, you know, other, you know, digital technology certifications. But the difference here is these classes are much shorter. You know, what Aliqua was talking about in terms of the commitment, last year's program required 280 hours in classroom, in addition to what you had to do on your own. Now, I know they revised the program and made it 210, but the whole country is watching what we're trying to accomplish here because this is viewed to be leading it. And so no one wants more than all of us to see more success because this is a big deal. There are lots of, there's a whole big job network that Cisco has in place, you know, trying to drive this forward. But the big issue is you've got people who realize that this is serious. You know, and, and it's an investment, and with all of the changes that have been made going forward, hopefully that will get us further along. But there are also others studying and looking to, to move ahead. It's just a lot more difficult. But again, it is multi-pronged, and we're hoping that more people continue to move forward. But with the piece that we've got going on at the library, again, which is shorter duration, we've had lots of success in terms of people. So I don't want you to just look at one side of the leg. There are lots of things going on around technology and trying to prepare the public to compete in the marketplace.
No, this sounds great. I'm more focused on just the Cisco certification, some of the ones in front of us, but with, with, how many came out of the NAM program?
Um, okay, so you want to know how many people successfully went through all 280 hours out of the NAM program? Just try and answer.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, let's start there, because that was $137,000 with Cisco training over there. And I don't, is that still, that's still there, not there?
Um, from, I don't really know what happened in regards to the numbers with the NAM tech, but I believe only two students successfully completed the class, the night class with NAM. That was my understanding. So.
I mean, that's $137,000 just in Cisco training, and two. Two.
Unfortunately, I don't, I just came in on the program, so I don't know what was spent last year. That number sounds high. I don't think that that was only for these Cisco class. I think that might have a little bit more of the other legs that.
Did NAM do more than just Cisco?
Yes. Did digital or everything?
And there, and there are other NAM that are paid for?
That's correct.
Because the, the website takes it to, it takes you to the city website, so you can sign up for the program that runs from December 1st, or January 1st to December 31st, 2018. So it's kind of, I, I, I just think a little more focus on how successful these programs are. You know, some of the other ones sound very successful, and those are great, but some of these, they need to have more results, otherwise it's, it's, it's a nice thought that's just a bad investment, and we should not probably be in the business of doing that.
Counselwoman Davis. Yeah, so. We're, we're almost there. Let me go with that, Counselwoman. Counsel, Counselwoman Mills-Rancey.
Okay. My, I know you were in a, is it possible addressing some of the council's, the tenants' concerns that when you get, with the director, that maybe we can get a piece on the evaluation of the classes or what the instructors consider?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't, I hope that didn't sound like that, because I said I wasn't in it, that it sounded like I was trying to answer the question.
No, 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 what I'm trying to say is I'm not trying to put it on you because you're not the director.
Oh, I understand.
Asking you, through you, to, I just see if you can get the information because I don't know if there is a piece of evaluating the instructors or not. You know, from my educational background, evaluation is very important, so I don't know if that peaks out there. And also, it seems to be that somewhere on the website or whatever, the figures may be misleading in terms of what is with Cisco as opposed to the other pieces. So if we could get a breakdown.
Yeah, we can, we can name that. We'll work with the, with the director.
I know, don't feel, I don't want you to feel like.
No, 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 I just want to make sure, welcoming and answering questions.
Counselwoman Davis, any question?
No, just a general comment. I mean, I'm glad that they're at least recognizing shortfalls that they're having and trying to correct it and with the screening process. I would say that, you know, the numbers do need to improve, but, you know, definitely having this program does show a commitment to helping people gain skills, especially in in-demand industries like technology. So this is something that we should continue, but we have to provide very good oversight to make sure that it produces better results.
Counselwoman Good.
Yeah, I would just like to piggyback off of Counselwoman Mills-Rancey. I think to alleviate those questions and concerns, if we could just simply have those numbers and stats that we would understand moving forward what the proactivity and productivity is with this particular program.
Counselwoman Davis.
Yes, thanks for being here today. What is the buy-in for the residents? So I know you said you try to express to them that they can't be replaced in the class, but what, is there any type of buy-in, like, you have to be here? Or is it just like, we signed up, and now if we don't show up, the city's taking a loss for this money? Like, how are we, besides just talking to them and reinforcing that, how are we making sure that they're going to show up?
Um, right now, we don't have anything in place to do that. From my understanding, I've wanted to kind of put like a deposit down, like, put it in the escrow account, something like that, just to hold on to that money. But from my understanding, there's going to be ordinances and other stuff that need to be put in place before we can do that. But I wanted to kind of continue with the program with the hopes that we would have some ordinance to you in time for us to run the new program, that that would be something that we would be doing. Giving to them, some way for them to buy in and put in money into it so that it's not like, hey, it's a free program. Because it does cost about $3,000 and change at Union County College just to go on your own. And it is correct, the city is putting that bill. And for Neil, instead of him charging like a per-person rate, he charges hourly. So even so, we would want to have them put something in, but until we can get those ordinances in place and do other things that, to make sure, you know, don't want any lawsuits. So I want to make sure that it's right, we do it the right way, and those are things that we are planning for the next go-around of these Cisco classes. But we're just hoping to see what we did right this time around, get it right. You know, we also had other issues with NAM tech, which is why we did end that partnership. So it wasn't just 100% on the students for some of that dropout. So I don't want you to think like, oh, it's the residents, that was not all the case.
Um, also, with these resolutions that we have authorizing, are they for the next round of classes or are these classes currently happening?
They're not currently happening. These are the classes that we hope to start happening by March, to be done, really, if everything is done properly, we should be done by November. But we're telling the students December so that, you know, just to. But we're telling the students December, so that, you know, just to give the extra time in case we do have to slow down classes or do whatever we need to do, we want to make sure it's successful, and that everyone is getting through this together as a group. So we're doing this more as a family. That's why we're only doing 10 versus the 35 that we did last, I mean, 20 versus the 35 we did last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, we, we did spend a lot of time on this, but I, but I think it's warranted, given the fact that, you know, this is a substantial investment of community funds. Uh, so, you know, I certainly agree with everyone regarding that, especially Council McKenna, who surely emphasized that. Uh, but also, this is somewhat of a public service announcement for the community, for this program that Plainfield has that is, um, that, that we think is very valuable, that many may not know about, or at least the right people know about, you know, because this is not something that everybody will be able to invest the amount of time in, and it's a serious thing that they're getting involved in, just like it's a serious deliberation that we're having regarding this, this, this program. So we hope that there are interested people, people that may hear about this, or if you watch the meeting, or if you people are in the audience that may relay the message about this wonderful program. Uh, we're doing our best to bring things like this to the city. Uh, and, and clearly, if it's, if we don't have committed people that are willing to engage in this program, then it, it won't be around forever. So we hope that, uh, that, that this all shows that it's a serious program, that we're willing to invest in it, and we hope that the community is willing to invest in themselves by taking part in this. So, we have consensus to add this item to the agenda, and I, I do want to say, you know, to Councilwoman McKenna's point, that we, we should take detailed metrics regarding the education of, of the individuals involved, whatever pertinent information, so that we can begin to describe and, and, and understand who's in, in the program and, and base our success after, after that. So that's a good point, McKenna, and I, I think with that added, I, I, one of our people, we have consensus to add to the agenda.
Yes?
No.
Yes.
Take the roll call? That's President McKeon, visually or as a law?
Uh, it was just an-
So, call on W., Councilmember Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransfield?
Yes.
Vice President Almody?
Yes.
Council President Hawke?
Sir.
Is that in favor to oppose this assessment, so we can ready the meeting? And, call on X. Councilmember Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransfield?
Yes.
Vice President Almody?
Yes.
Council President Hawke?
Yes.
Is that in favor to oppose this item, who can ready the meeting?
I would just like to say to, I get the real good sense of, you're just getting any of the notes, we're really going to pick out, I just want to say that.
Thanks, John Philbin.
Okay, will the administration present the ordinances submitted for consideration?
Uh, there are three items for consideration by council. Uh, if there are any questions, I will ask, uh, O6, Valerie, $7 Valerie, Daxton, and O8, Rod, will take those questions.
Okay. Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, um, Director Jackson, can you just explain for the benefit of the public, um, what a pilot is and why this pilot is important to this project?
So first of all, a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. So, uh, in these cases, for these projects, the developer would be paying a payment in lieu of taxes. For market rate projects, uh, the payment in lieu of taxes is always significantly higher than what we would get under current taxes without the property being developed. Why do we grant pilots? We grant pilots because all but for the pilot, the project doesn't get done. And so when we do payments in lieu of taxes, we do an evaluation of investment and return on investment. Uh, there are some standards set by the New Jersey Economic Development Authority in what some of those rates of returns are. Uh, for communities, so it takes the, it costs the same amount to build a project in Plainfield as it would in Jersey City, so I'll give that as an example, it'd be the same project. It costs as much to produce it. Only difference is, in Jersey City, they can get more revenue, meaning monthly rents, uh, for the project, so the return on investment is greater. Uh, pilots are used in, uh, what they would call economically disadvantaged communities primarily, uh, so that we can kind of level the playing field. And quite frankly, the financial institutions, the lenders who do construction financing as well as permanent financing for these projects, are looking for what they consider predictable taxes. And so what a payment in lieu of taxes allows you to do is provide that certainty. And so for this particular project, uh, without a pilot, the return on investment is less than 5%. So after they invest all the millions of dollars, they're getting less than 5% without a pilot. And most of you are financially savvy, and so would you want a rate of less than 5%? Uh, with this pilot, it is still not up at the target New Jersey Economic Development Authority rate. That rate is usually 11 to 13%. With the pilot, in this case that we negotiated, it's around a little over 7% return on investment. But in real numbers for us, uh, that the city currently collects about $38,000 on this property today, and that, uh, the city's share of that is around $22,000. So we collect 38, we get 22, the rest of it goes to the county, the schools, and whatever else. Uh, the first year of the pilot, the city will collect $306,000. We will, city's share will be $297,000. And so that's a significant increase in revenue for the city. So over the life of this tax abatement for 30 years, uh, if we just left it as is, we would get $900,000. Uh, with the pilot, the city's anticipated revenue is going to be $22 million. And so a lot of times, people like to ask me, well, what would conventional taxes be under that? Uh, well, conventional taxes would be, in this case, uh, about $23 million instead of $16 million. But the $23 million dollar project that would generate those taxes is not going to happen. Simply not going to happen because the developer can't get a decent return on investment. So, but that's basically what a pilot is, is to incent developers to do projects, uh, and so that we can get more revenue, more tax revenue into the city for these projects. And again, the way the statute works is, all but for the pilot, this project would not get done. So that's the way the statute works. So hopefully that explains it.
Um, so, two more questions.
Yes.
So, um, one, you said with the conventional taxes of us putting up a building, we wouldn't get the same as if we got a pilot?
No, what I said is, with conventional taxes, we would get over the life of 30 years, $22,000. But what I'm telling you is, that project will not be built, because nobody's going to do it. Uh, what I am telling you is, under a pilot, over 30 years, we will get $16 million, and that project will get built.
So, what's the benefit, so it sounds like the city's winning with the pilot?
Yes.
So what's the benefit to the developer to build this project if it looks like we're winning this, and like, how does the developer get their share?
The determine, be assured that they're going to get, they're looking at their return on investment. And so developers have different strategies. And so some will stabilize the project for 10 years and then sell it, and they'll make their money on the sell. And then others who come in may increase the rents. That's still a win for the city, because we are getting our revenue based on average gross rents. So if they collect more money, we get more money. So that's the way the pilot works, because they're a percentage. They're not fixed rates, it's a percentage of average gross rents.
Also, um, and looking at what they believe the average monthly rent to be?
Mm-hmm.
How do they come up with these numbers? Is this, like, is this what the market is dictating now here in Plainfield, or whether they compare to get these particular numbers?
So they try to compare like to like. So if there is a market in Plainfield for the type of product that, uh, they're delivering, they compare to Plainfield. Then they start to spread out from Plainfield. So they do what is known as a market analysis, and so really, uh, the only comparable project in Plainfield right now would be, um, the Quinn. And so they're currently watching the Quinn, everybody's watching it, what's the lease rate, when are they going to be leased up, all of those kinds of things. And so then they spread out from, uh, there to other communities of like projects. It's kind of like even doing a property appraisal.
Councilwoman Davis, any questions? No questions. Vice President Almody?
No questions.
Councilwoman Mills Ransfield?
No questions.
Councilmember McCray?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement. Um, last week, um, myself and some other individuals who are here attended a planning session, and in that session, there's a community that we like to compare ourselves to, Fandwood, where the mayor of Fandwood spoke about pilots, and how pilots, she wished she had have embraced them 10 years ago, because in areas of ours, pilots are the way to get development moving in our cities, and therefore, we can demand more from developers through the use of pilots. And it was just amazing, Alan, that we sat through that class, and this individual here, we always compare ourselves to, was embracing them and saying that, everybody on the Raritan Valley line, we use them pilots in order to develop their community, and hope that Plainfield would not be left behind.
Thank you for your comment, Councilmember McCray. Councilman McKenna?
Yes, um, so I'm, I'm a, um, I'm not a pilot, and I embrace pilots, I find, I understand the value of pilots. Um, sometimes I, I get concerned about certain things, and I, and I was kind of looking at the, um, the, in the document that showed pilot payments against the, um, regular payments, and it shows the, the relationship percentage. And I'm just kind of looking at it, and, and curious as to how we got to that, those percentages at that, the way that they creep like that, at 42%, and then, like, five, four years at 43, five years at 44, how, how we, you know, and then we skip, we jump a lot from 44 to 49, um, how did we arrive at that? And I imagine I wasn't up in the first pack.
Yes, so, uh, the way the long-term is, it's known as the long-term tax extension statute. With the statute, you have to have step-ups, and the step-ups, uh, what you're trying to do is get the person who's paying those taxes by the end of term, paying what they would pay under conventional taxes.
Correct.
Okay, so there's a step-up, and so for the, uh, the, there are three step-up periods in this particular pilot, you can have more. So, uh, we have 1 to 10 years, uh, it's a certain percent, that's 10% of average gross rents, whatever the developer is projected as to rents. Uh, the next step-up would be 11 to, the 11th year to the 20th year, which is at 11%. And then the third step-up is 21 to 30 at 12%. And so remember, it's a function of the rents, and what we're doing is having step-ups. So the statute makes you do the step-ups to get a person to, or a developer to, almost at full taxes by the end of the term, so there's not like what you have with, um, those arms, those adjustable rates where it jumps up, you've got this balloon payment, and you can't pay it. So that's the step-up phase.
The, um, the other question I had is, uh, more, more of just a secondary one, the perspective of pilots, the pilots really only to the improvements on property, correct?
It's related only to the improvements, correct.
So the land assessment is still taxed regularly?
At the regular, yes, at the regular.
So that, that portion of it, whatever-
Doesn't change.
Should be 200 and some thousand, has the, the same percentage breakdown for school, city, county?
Yes, but the land remains the same, it's only on the improvement, it's the building.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, we're running since 2020, oh eight. Uh, if Director West, you could just discuss, uh, the, the request for an increase and clarify, uh, whether or not we're raising taxes because of that.
Let me start with the latter. We are not raising taxes. This is the seventh time I have presented this ordinance to this body. And, uh, what we're doing is, we are asking council prior to the budget process to follow the statute, which allows us to raise appropriations up to 3.5%. And so this is a measure that I've been recommending, because it's just a planning tool. You know, we haven't submitted a budget, you know, we have not used the cap bank in the prior six years, and don't anticipate using it going forward. But again, it is a tool that can work with. There will come a time when the city will have a need, potentially, to raise the appropriate appropriation level up to 3.5%. And so what I'm asking you here is to, once again, you know, allow us to raise the appropriation level in line with the statute of the 3.5%. And, and again, once the budget is introduced, remember it, council controls the budget. You know, so this has nothing to do with taxes, the budget hasn't even been brought forward, and so when we, when we do that, we will look, but there is no tax increase. You know, we have not been using the cap bank in terms of reaching that appropriation level, we've been coming well under it, which is why there's a bank, because we haven't been spending the money. You know, so it's really to allow us the flexibility to do that, should we ever have a need, to utilize that cap bank in order to raise the appropriation level up to 3.5%, if that makes sense.
Thank you for the clarification. Do we have consensus to raise the, do we have questions?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, so, Mr. West, you said that it's an appropriation, but then you said we have money that we're banking? Can you just, so I think that's the part that confuses me. So, it's an appropriation, so we're not-
We were asking for the ability to increase the appropriation level by 3.5%.
Right. So then, when we had this discussion last year, there was discussion about there's money that every two years disappears or something, can you explain that part?
You build the bank. If we understand the appropriation levels, you, in essence, save the appropriation level that you didn't utilize, that becomes the bank. So, and you can have up to two years of that bank. So, for, for this year, you're looking at 18 to 19 comprised 20. Next year, it would be 19 and 20, you know, you know, if, if there was that bank available. But this is only to have the authority to raise the appropriation level. This right this second isn't tied directly to the budget, the budget hasn't been presented.
Okay, so, this is just an appropriation, so what we don't spend, so the 3% is 3% of our total budget, or where's this 3% number?
The 3.5% is, is, is a calculation that's made on what, what gets known as the allowable appropriations. Subject to the elimination of certain items, we take a number, $75 million, you know, and you're able to then apply, you know, the 2.5%, which is a statutory increase that we, we can do, and then you add- And then you add another one percent on top of that, you know, as, as a part of the calculation.
And then what we're not using is available for us to appropriate on top of the three point five percent?
The three point five percent is what you are able to add on top of that, should we need it. If we, if we, let, let's just say, you know, the budget comes in and we spend, you know, seventy million dollars of allowable expenses and we have appropriated for seventy-five, you know, some of that money would then go into the bank because it wasn't, we didn't go to the full appropriation level.
So then the next year, we will be able to appropriate that five million dollars on top?
Wouldn't be that high, but yes. Some part of that five million would be used for the cap bank going forward. That's correct.
And then, so the cap bank is in case of emergencies or something, we can, we then have money to appropriate.
We have the authority to raise the appropriation level.
Okay.
It's about the appropriation, not money.
So it's no actual money?
That is correct, for the moment.
So when does that change, when does that moment change from no actual money to real money?
Counselor votes on the budgets.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. All right, citizens of participation. Citizens are welcome to address the council or any government item of concern, whether or not is scheduled on the agenda. During this portion of the agenda, sort of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name, address to the clerk for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time a single speaker is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. Watchers are urged to select someone to represent them. It is open.
Thank you, Council President. Jim Spear, six oh nine Belvedere Avenue. Just a couple items. You know, on the pilots, I'm very much in favor of pilots. I'm happy that Charles attended that class and learned more about them too. It's a good tool that the city needs, needs to use. If you look at Elizabeth, you know, the whole Jersey Garden Mall area, that would never have been developed without pilots. So it includes not only the mall, but all the surrounding hotels that created many, many jobs for residents of Elizabeth. I mean, like a thousand jobs there has to be that was created with the hotels and, and with that mall. But let's not be naive to the fact that they do get tax breaks. To answer Ashley's question, um, this developer that you're speaking about tonight, he's getting a six million dollar tax break. You know, would, would the program have happened without it? No. Valerie is absolutely right that it wouldn't happen. But let's not fool ourselves and think that he's not getting a break. And us, as land use members, as council members, and as planning board members, have to hold these developers to doing the right thing. We shouldn't be letting them get away with murder and building buildings that we don't want, that they want, while we're giving them tax breaks at the same time. My other concern about pilots is, is, is the Wawa. I'm not sure at this point if the Wawa is getting a tax pilot. It's not?
No.
Okay. Because, you know, it was part of a redevelopment plan.
It was part of redevelopment.
So it's not getting a tax break. Thank goodness, because then we'd be subsidizing every pack of cigarettes that was sold. Um, I just want to speak about the Cisco, you know. I think it's, it's good that us as a society, that, you know, we educate our children. You know, I don't have any children in the, in the Plainfield school system. The houses I own, I pay them fifty thousand dollars in real estate taxes to the city. And, um, but I feel a responsibility to educate our children through the school system. I don't think the city should be doing that. I don't agree with the Cisco program. I don't think we should be spending taxpayer money to do this. Now, under all your watch, think about this, think about what the state here, all you council people here, under your watch, we have eleven hundred homes right now in the city of Plainfield that have PMUA names on them. People can't afford to pay their real estate taxes, they can't afford to pay their PMUA bills. Eleven hundred homes, that's one out of fifteen. Think about it, think about, picture your block, picture Melrose Place. Every fifteenth house, I'm sorry?
Proceed.
Did I get the street wrong? I apologize.
No.
One out of every fifteen houses of your neighbors has a tax name on it. That's scary. You have a fiduciary responsibility to keep the line on taxes. Linden does it every year, three years in a row. Westfield just did it also. And their school system isn't subsidized like ours are. The last one I want to make, and I thank Valerie for reminding us that, um, New Jersey American Water has a responsibility to repay South Avenue from Leland to Tewa. And I'm just impressing that Director Adam, um, not only include the yellow line down the road, but to cut the white line. If you notice the continuation of South Avenue into Fannwood, you have the white line and it serves a couple purposes. One, it shows where people are allowed to park. Of course, it shows the turn traffic lines between the yellow line and the white line, but it also shows where people can park. We don't have that now. And as people move into the Quinn, you're going to have people parking out on the street. You know, the building next to the Quinn, the five-story building, you know, they're already parked over at Fine Fair. They're already parked on what used to be, you know, old South Avenue that's been vacated now, they're parked in there. Once the park is redone, they're not going to be able to park in there and they're going to end up on South Avenue. So we need that white line. So I, I think you should also not only consider just putting in the white line, but also mark out where the parking spots are. It's already a problem now, you know, with the parking box, you know, and when the summer comes and the spring comes and people are in dairy cream, you can't even park on South Avenue because you don't know where you're going to park. So, you know, maybe we get New Jersey American Water, you know, to do that, to spare expense down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry.
Donnie Pritchard, formerly of Seven Twenty Three, Arlington, Plainfield, New Jersey. Al four one zero Bruce Allen Garb. Several things I'd like to address the city council about. First, on Black History Month, we need to improve the curriculum for, to study Colin Powell. He is the first Buffalo soldier to attain the position of Chairman of Joint Chiefs of Staff and also to be, to serve as Secretary of State. He's one fine soldier and one fine statesman. And I think that our students ought to, uh, study about him. And while I'm such a soldier, we need to back our soldiers, sailors, Marines, Coast Guard, and Airmen, the, the ones defending our freedom and our rights. We failed to do so during the war in Vietnam. Sixteen of Plainfield's sons lost their lives during the war. Those who came back, they were called Nazis, boers, baby killers. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. The four brave soldiers were despised, door cam as a stranger. Remember, he's his country's stay in day and on our danger. And lastly, we need to reactivate the hospital at Milamberg, at that Milamberg site. We need to reactivate Milamberg as soon as possible. We cannot afford to lose that. I'm not talking about head colds or earaches, I'm talking about people's lives. When Rhode Island attack occurs, we'll need that hospital, we'll need that hospital very, very bad. So we must consider reactivating the hospital and keep the hospital's site as is. The sooner I activate Milamberg, the better off we all would be. They're like myself, Eric.
Good evening, everyone. Maharajadri, two hundred court place. Um, just a quick comment on the discussion that was had on the Cisco certification. So I have a bit of a technology background myself. There's definitely value in...
Did you say your name or something?
Maharajadri. Um, there's definitely value in, uh, providing students and Plainfield residents with an alternative to what I've seen personally to college, uh, through these certifications and getting jobs in the technology sector. But I do want to emphasize, um, what we mean by technology when we invest in these kinds of certifications. It's not in what I believe, like a, a largely growing sector, which is software engineering versus networking. So networking is awesome and we need that kind of expertise and, and, and experience. But I think a much more effective use of funds, especially public funds, would be to invest in software engineering programs, uh, teaching students how to program and not putting an age minimum or limitation on that. Some of the best programs that I personally work with are high school. So, um, maybe something that complements like high school programs or, or other citywide programs, um, just a thought when it comes to, you know, the public funds that we're using to invest in technology, so to speak. So again, uh, there's definitely value there, but I think a much more in-demand and high-paying jobs really focused on software engineering, which is completely different than Cisco certifications. One is networking and one is building, you know, like web services, apps, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Total good.
He has a key, eleven twenty-nine Rhode Island. First of all, I'm going to want to thank the council, you know, the hours moving on, but I really, as a citizen, appreciate the dialogue that you have tonight and the questions and the answers, because it was very informative and that's the way the bureaucracy is supposed to work, not like how it's working down in Washington, D.C. I just want to remind everybody that over the weekend, we lost a mayor of the city of Plainfield, Frank Black. I happen to remember him because I grew up in town. He appointed my father to the Middlesex County Utility Authority. He, he served this town during some trying times. He was very, he was, uh, very, um, supportive of Milamberg Hospital. He served us when we had civil unrest. And, um, his wake is tomorrow and then his funeral is on Wednesday. And, um, he is one, uh, he's, there's now, we only have four living mayors, um, now. He was the oldest one that was still alive. So I just wanted to mention that. He always treated people with respect and dignity, always had a smile on his face, and he was always very civil. And, um, even when he faced trials and tragedies, he's tried to see the best in everything. And, um, you know, the last I talked with him was about a year ago. And I recently sent him a letter and obviously he didn't respond because he was sicker than I thought. Um, my other concern is, um, it's kind of like a technical question, and I don't know where to find the answer. If the city in the past passed an ordinance that may have an impact on a current ordinance, does the new ordinance supersede the old ordinance or does the old ordinance have to be rescinded before the new ordinance gets put in place? And then my other comment is about the Park Avenue Gateway Redevelopment Plan. I know it's a vacant lot, I'm not against the redevelopment, but there is a structure there that happens to be on the cover of the redevelopment plan that's on the city's website. It looks like a rinky-dink garage, it looks like it's nothing. But there was a reason why it was saved. Um, it was Louis Chevrolet's garage. Uh, there has been a lot of interest and I've had people contact me from Michigan. There's now a writer in Switzerland who's writing a book about Louis Chevrolet. He did live in this town, he did live on that lot, that was his garage. I cannot say that, um, he owned the property because I wasn't able to find the deed, but his brother did own a piece of land on West Front Street. Um, his sister married the Denoyers from North Plainfield, and he did develop one of his very first cars in the city of Plainfield over on West Front Street. There is concern about that garage, people would like to see it saved. I think that's the reason why Milamberg now tours down because they probably knew about the significance of the Louis Chevrolet garage. If you look at it, you say, no, it's just, you know, it's just a garage. Well, it does have a second floor, it does have a fireplace, because it does have a chimney, which is very unusual. And if there's any way you can get a developer to, hey, take it apart and move it, there's places that are interested perhaps in having it. So I just want to let you know that, you know, there, there are people from outside of the city that are concerned about that garage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President. Uh, just one comment. We are familiar with the garage and the whole story and we will work with you to, to, you can work with me on that, particularly the garage and saving it.
Okay. Question and answer.
Just work with me on something.
But, but also Nancy, speak with our, our council regarding your resolution question.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My name is Raynard Walton. I am the owner and builder, developer of the property at two oh three, two oh seven U.S. I come before you a little bit crazy to develop the Chevrolet stuff. I'm a forward man. When it comes to the Cisco, when it comes to Cisco, I think the monies would be a little bit more well spent investing in our children, in the high school, who are not seeking technology but the medical field. Plainfield has a problem with EMTs and response time and picking up the dead and helping the injured and sick. Milamberg Hospital maintains seven seats for those from this city to become nurses. And for some unknown reason, these seats are not there. Now, if you take a child, let's say my daughter, eleven grade, I had to send her to Uni County College and pay twenty-six hundred dollars to take a ten credit course, which is put on to her nursing degree, which she'd need seventy in order to be able to send for the next level, test to become a nurse. So most nurses begin doing that and riding on mercy and the squash. And that is an immediate benefit to the city and it would be money's well spent, as I hear, to people on graduation because most of the people who enter the ENT program take it seriously. And they do serve the city. You might not recognize it, but they do. Now, it's lucky I came here tonight because I'd like to talk about this development of the city. How dare I enter the military and become a commando and work for our nation in some of its worst endeavors? Come back here and purchase the land with cash earned with the sweat on my back and attempt to file all my paperwork and enter into a contract with the city to, maybe, loan to Malsen, to lay each and every one of those blocks with my own hands, to be interfered with, electric taken, gas removed, refusal to inspect, and even all my documents that the city had thrown in the garbage. The tax office comes and I'm paying full taxes. And the house doesn't even have the gas line or the meter. It has the gas line, so we know that the paperwork was filed to do that. We also know the development permit and everything's submitted and everything's stamped and approved. But yet, for some unknown reason, there's a lot of things going on at this property where the building department is using it as a profitable situation. And this is corruption. If you notice, my home is two oh three dash two oh seven. We know that the odd side of the street always begins in two oh one. Where is two oh one U.S.? I was told that if I own the corner property, I can't have a six-foot fence. So I showed the city in the court before the Arnold judge that I don't own two oh one U.S. For the research, we find out that someone took a payoff and subdivided ten square feet on that corner, so the taxes are low for that property. Once I purchased and began to develop, they sold me the property on the adjacent street, the rear yard to a house that's only twenty-five by thirty-five feet. So if that property belonged to the city, it never belonged to that house. Bing, 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 bells ring. I find out that in nineteen thirty, you know, in the times when they were stealing the property back from their, away from their rightful owners, you know, doing all kinds of wickedness, I find that the corner house and those three single houses never met any of the requirements to be built in the first place. They issued certificates of occupancies every year and people are able to use these certificates to garnish my...
Counselor, your time's up.
I'd like for the city to earnestly...
You can finish.
...meet with me, someone, my councilman, anybody, to look over, find out why you've been stopping me for the past sixteen years.
Thank you.
over, find out why you've been stopping me for the past 16 years from finishing this development. And Mr. West, last time I was here, you said you wondered why it takes so long. This is my second time, third month.
Seeing no further, let me make a motion of, of the com.
Move.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions, of the commons close. The intent on motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
On the favor. Aye. Opposition, abstentions, any adjournments?